Two, call, I pledge allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, the rules of order. We operate the meetings with Robert's Rules of Order and other rules and procedures adopted at the organizational meeting held last month. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council. October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, regular council meeting. November second, two thousand eighteen, special council meeting. November ninth, two thousand eighteen, special council meeting. November fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, organizational meeting. And November fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, special council meeting.
Mr. Chairman, will you approve the minutes from the meetings?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
I'll abstain as I was not at three of the five.
That's what I was going to ask.
And I also abstain, I was absent from two or three of them because of my leg.
I was here.
Other than that, motion passes forty, five to two. There are two abstentions. Item five, city manager's report. Mr. Cole.
Mr. Chair, City Hall will be closed at noon on December twenty-fourth, going into Christmas Eve, and closed on Christmas Day and New Year's Day. Winter carnival this year will be on Saturday, February ninth, and more details at next month's meeting. A couple very positive things. We got an advanced copy of Main Magazine. Beautiful, beautiful photography and it's a nice piece. It's their Economic Development or Entrepreneurship Edition. And there's a ten-page spread on Ellsworth in the magazine that should be hitting the stands soon, highlighting the city's partnership with Jackson Laboratory, the small businesses, including our beer producer over here.
On time.
Is in the, in the magazine. I mean, it's just a very nice promotional piece for the city and, as my wife told me, this is a real magazine, there's a lot of influential people who read this, so it's a good thing. The other thing is Main Biz Magazine. This year, they're going on the road in two thousand nineteen and visiting six cities. Ellsworth has been selected among the applicants to be visited by Main Biz in May, and obviously they'll give us a lot of coverage at the time, so that's a very positive thing for the community. The, the only other communities north of Waterville were Millinocket and ourselves and Portland, Bath, and the Kennebunks. So we're in pretty good company. One other item, just to set the record straight, there was recently an article in the Ellsworth American concerning a police officer to be placed out at Main Coast Memorial Hospital. In fairness to the writer of the story, did say in the body of the story that that was subject to council approval, but I do want to point out to the public that these discussions between the police chief and the hospital are very preliminary. No consensus been reached yet, even at a staff level, and right now, Ellsworth-like communities all over the state are having a hard time finding police. There is a shortage and we're down a couple of positions, so even if this was something that the chief and the council wanted to pursue, we're up against it in terms of finding people now, just to fill our core patrol positions. So, just want to set the record straight, certainly there's merit to partnering with the hospital, but we've got a lot of other challenges as well. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Item six, committee reports. If there's any councilors that have had, been to any committee meetings in the last month to report on, now's your time.
The Harbor Commission met on the second Wednesday, and as you could probably guess, there isn't much going on down there at the Harbor, but
I bet not.
They did test out the new machines that are supposed to take care of the ice, and there wasn't much ice, but they worked wonderfully. So we're hoping that when the real ice comes, they'll do a great job. And right now, the commissioners are preparing a budget, and in February, there's, there's going to be a workshop with the city council on some of the issues that the, the council and the Harbor Commission would like to discuss. But that won't be till
February fourth.
February fourth.
Counselor. Fourth.
Also. The Recreation Committee met December fifth with Shane Lowell and a number of other folks. Shane gave us the travel and rec basketball. They're underway now, and he, I don't know if many of you know, but they set up the ice rink, opened December thirteenth, up at the park. And they're going to try to offer some designated times for some skating instruction and hockey instruction as well, and they're going to post those right there on. We also discussed movie nights. The one in November was canceled due to snow, so they were going to try to coordinate with PTF because they do a similar thing, and so they didn't want to interfere with each other. Discussed winter carnival, which David already mentioned, is February ninth and tenth, and we're going to meet again to finalize the plans, but there is a number of events that they're scheduling. And our next meeting is scheduled for January second.
By chance, did they say anything on their Facebook page that they're going to post again this year when the rink is open?
I did see on the Ellsworth Ice Rink Facebook page that it had been posted that it was open on December thirteenth, and they were giving updates, I think, a couple since then, yes.
Counselor Hudson.
Do you know if the Y is charging for the hockey and skating and construction?
No.
Know if it's going to be free, if folks want to use it?
Yeah.
That's great.
Counselor Fordyall.
Just to add to that comment, I was part of a string that they were trying to add Shane to the administrator page for the Facebook so he could keep it up to date, and the only one to do that is Morgan Sorrow, and she's out of town, but that is their intent, is to get Shane access to the Facebook, ice skating Facebook page, so he could keep it up. He's got that now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Item seven, citizens' comments. We set this time aside if anyone wants to bring us up to date on anything, bring, make us aware of anything that is not on the agenda tonight. Now's your, now's your chance. Mr. Workman.
Good evening, council members. Want to bring you up to date on what I had to try to do to alleviate a problem that my neighbor caused. I finished the trench, put in drainage. Temporary solution, temporary, because it's not going to last. It's only going to stop it for a while. But I do want to bring up some items. Under Main Revised Statutes, Chapter seventeen, crimes, Chapter ninety-one, nuisances. Unreasonably use of land that results in altered flow of surface water that unreasonably injures another land or that unreasonably injures, interferes with the reasonable use of another land is a nuisance. Now, I'm going to cite into your property maintenance ordinance. Roofs and drains, drainage, the roof and flashing, oh, excuse me. Wrong one. Stormwater discharge. Drainage of roofs and paved areas, yards and courts and other open areas on premises shall not be discharged in a manner that creates a public nuisance. Okay. Roof water shall not be discharged in a manner that creates a public nuisance. That's three oh three point two in Section three oh three, and the other one was in Section five oh six, five oh six point one. That's in your maintenance ordinance of the city. So this is an obvious alteration of surface water. I'd like to have something done about it. I've asked for quite a while to have something done about it, hasn't been done. And there's one other issue I could bring up, and I might do that right now, is that according to the subdivision rules and covenants, any substructures or garages that are to be built in the subdivision is supposed to have a forty-foot setback from all lines. I'm not part of the subdivision, and he's twenty, twenty feet from my property lot on this garage. I may pursue that, just so you know. Because all this drainage of his roofs or everything has been altered to come to my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
Rebecca Maddie Swilber from Ellsworth Falls, Maine. I wanted to raise a concern. My concern is that there's a citizen speak part of the meeting where a citizen can get up and speak about anything that they're concerned about. However, they received no feedback, and so it's not an interactive process with no expectation of any sort of change. So if a citizen decides and can compel the council to address an issue and put it on the agenda, one would expect it would be at that point that someone could speak freely about that issue that they're trying to have addressed. My concern is that moments before this meeting was called to order, I was told, as were my associates, that we would not be able to present information that had been presented before, only a couple of paragraphs that seemed to be new information. I raised the issue with Chairman Blanchett when he delivered that message, that there were two councilors that were not present, they were not on the council. So my concern is, though that item is now on the agenda, we have been restrained from being able to speak freely about it, and I'm fairly certain that the council does not have in itself a restriction on what they can say, nor would their attorney. So I'm concerned that even though we have followed the process for months, that we will not be able to represent ourselves adequately for the arguments which have undoubtedly been prepared in full. And I don't think that that is a fair maneuver to deliver that moments before meeting that we've prepared for, for a long time, is called to order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Item eight, presentation of awards.
Don't believe we have any tonight, Mr. Chair.
Under unfinished business, item nine, council order number one 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 eight one zero, consideration of the city's options in conjunction with the Tyconic property. This is delayed action taken from the November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, regular council meeting. This is a continuation of that item, this is not a new item tonight. Any information that we have already received, what people have said, history, their opinions of it, so on and so forth, we've heard it. I do not want to repeat it tonight. Anyone that wants to speak, they'll come to the podium, but they need to be recognized first. It's, that way, anybody that wants, that will give them the time, and you'll be limited to three minutes. There will be no speaking from the floor. Mr. Cole, we've had a, an opinion, I'm sorry, Mr. Cole and the council, we've had an opinion from an attorney not associated with Weber Oil.
Yes.
We, we have that in front of us. Is there anything else that you want to
I would point out, Mr. Chair, that Kate Grossman of Farrell, Rosenblatt, and Russell, I got that right, yes, is here to represent us tonight, and she is the author of the guidance that you've received and is certainly here to answer any questions you may have or any further guidance you're seeking in this matter. I would point out, my read of it is that the opinion is similar to that that you'd previously received from Ed Behr, although there, there are some distinctions, and she could address that.
Would you like to address it now, Kate? Any differences?
Certainly. Sure. The one difference
Okay. If you would come to the podium, please.
For the audience.
Just identify yourself for the record, please.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and councilors. I'm Kate Grossman from Farrell, Rosenblatt, and Russell, and I'm an attorney who's been brought in to, to give an independent second opinion on this particular question. So, yes, I reviewed Ed Behr's opinion and then reviewed the history of the documents and, and did my own analysis, and I think the one point of disagreement I had from the Redmond Winchell opinion was just regarding the zoning board of appeals jurisdiction to hear the appeal of the CEO's grant of the demolition permit. If you'll recall, Ed Behr, Redmond Winchell came to the conclusion that because there wasn't a specific provision of the ordinance cited in the appeal, that as a preliminary threshold matter, the Board of Appeals wouldn't have the jurisdiction to hear the appeal at all. And my reading of the appeal is, you know, the ordinance says that the Board of Appeals has the jurisdiction to hear appeals that allege an error in the administration of the ordinance. And to me, if somebody says that a permit shouldn't have been granted because, and I think in this case, the allegation can be read, the appeal can be read, that the property owner doesn't have the right title or interest to perform the land use activity that they're proposing, to me, that it would be the allegation of an error in the administration of the ordinance. So my opinion is that the Board of Appeals would have the jurisdiction to hear the appeal. That is not the same as saying that the appeal should be granted, but merely that that appeal that was submitted on September twelfth, the Board would have the jurisdiction to hear it. In all other regards, I think you'll see that my opinion is essentially consistent with Ed Behr.
Thank you very much. Counselors, any questions? Counselor Fordyall.
Kate, thanks for coming down. I take it from reading your, your report that I hadn't been told that there was a newer appeal been filed in this, but I take it by reading this that because of the time involved, that that also would go to the appeals board for them to rule whether the appeal was valid and whether they were going to take it up.
That's right. Well, and in the reverse order of what you just said, exactly. So, yes, I learned just a couple of days before I sent that letter to the city manager that Judith Blood had submitted a second appeal to the Board of Appeals, but appealing the same action, the code enforcement officer's grant of a demolition permit to Weber back in September. But that appeal with alleging new, different errors was submitted in December, and there's a clear thirty-day limit on the submission of an appeal. So that one, in my opinion, is, it's not timely, so that would be for the Board of Appeals to ultimately make that determination, but to convene a hearing, look at it, say, is this appeal timely? If they determine it's not, then they don't hear it.
Thank you. And if I could add, Mr. Chair, this is to just keep you aware of what's going on. Obviously, this is, this appeal would go to the Board of Appeals, and they have not yet acted upon it.
Right.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions? I'm sorry, Counselor Hamilton.
In general, or the attorney, or in general?
Either way.
Because I have a question, I'd like to ask Ms. Blood a question if I could.
Sure.
If you wouldn't mind, Ms. Blood. So, the question I have is, what specifically, if you could reiterate, what you would like for action taken, so that it's very clear and on the record, so that I can understand that?
I have some prepared comments, but I don't know if I'm at liberty to read them.
Well, this point, could you start with just answering that question for me in terms of what the specific request is of the council?
It really falls, in my logical reasoning, in the comments that I have, what I would like to ask of the council. It feels awkward to say it just by itself without giving you the history. So if I'm not at liberty to do that, then it feels awkward. So I can do it. I would like, I would like to see the city council rescind the permit. I would like, especially in light, see, this doesn't make sense, especially in light of the fact that right now, pending, what is pending is National Historic Registry approval. I was going to tell you all about that, but now it feels really awkward just to say that. I would like for them to put it into the hands of an already formed group who has, since our last meeting, raised over thirty thousand dollars for the restoration of this building, six times what the Weber Oil paid for it. Maybe not in the court of law, but in the court of public opinion, the city should do the right thing. Negotiate with Weber for the return of the historic building, knowing that there's that group already ready to, to shepherd it through. Perhaps in the, in the court of law, without a covenant attached to the deed, there's no legal standing, however, perhaps the fact that the proposal was not attached to a deed has something to say about the city council in appeasing the residents of Ellsworth Falls with this acceptance of a bid of five thousand dollars. They should have known to attach a covenant to the deed. After all, it was the city's attorney, Ed Behr, who signed the deed. Perhaps there was a conflict of interest back in two thousand five, I'm not sure. Perhaps there were backroom meetings that, that made sure that there wasn't a covenant attached to the deed. But now, let's do the right thing. Let's negotiate with Weber, let's get the building back into the hands of the people who love it, and let's take care of it.
Yes. So, one other question, and this goes back to conversation we had after the meeting. My understanding from, from your perspective around the historic, in terms of becoming a historic building, is that it has to remain on that site, that there isn't an interest by your group to have it relocated to some other parcel?
It's not my group, it's Maine Historic Preservation and National Historic Registry. In order to qualify for that status, it needs to be in place.
Well, I mean, in terms of referencing your group, in terms of the interest, in terms of the money raised and everything, you're, you're saying that it has to remain on that parcel, that's
So the people who have, who have pledged financial, financial support at this point are doing so on good faith, should the building become available for restoration by a nonprofit? So, it, it's, it's very complicated because I don't own the building, the city doesn't own the building, but we're trying to get in place everything needed to make the council understand that this is not just a fly-by-night wish, this is a serious, a serious request. This is, these are people who, these are five hundred strong signatures who are ready to step forward and shepherd this.
I'm, I'm not clear if that was a yes or a no. I mean, I'd ask specifically if
His question was, what would I, what would I like to see come of the meeting?
The first question. His second question was, is your group, or is the group that you, that has been formed, not your group, the nonprofit that's been formed, only interested in preserving that building in place, or is it the building itself that they're interested in preserving? If it were moved, are they still interested in, in restoring it?
So it's, that's a really complicated thing, because there's actually two things going on right now. There's a National Historic Registry status that is pending, and then there is also the, the idea of having a nonprofit. One, one can actually supersede the other, one can make one not possible, so that if we go for National Historic Registry and then look to have funding through grants where the, the cost of, of rehabbing the building would be benefited by, by grants, those are not available if it's a five oh one three C. If it's a five oh one three C, then we have people who are ready to step forward and make donations. So it's really awkward, because we're, we're really spinning about three plates right now, because we don't know what's going to happen.
So
I wish I could have done my presentation, it would have made sense.
If it's a five oh one C three
Yes.
And the building was to be moved to another parcel, the five oh one C three could still support the building. It's, it's only if it becomes under the National Registry that they can't support the building?
If we're looking for grant money. If we're looking for grant money to make the restoration about forty percent of what it would cost otherwise, then it needs to remain in place. And why wouldn't it want, remain in place? It's, it's, it's Ellsworth Falls, it's the one route left in Ellsworth Falls.
Mr. Cole.
Just a couple points, and again, I defer to the attorney on these matters, but Ms. Blood referred to the council rescinding the permit, and I don't believe the council has the jurisdiction to do that. Secondly, what's before you is a remand from the Board of Appeals and how you want to deal with that, and I believe she has recommendations in her guidance to you
Right. So
And beyond that, it's certainly a policy question on your part, in terms of getting involved with the restoration of that building, but I don't believe it's on the agenda today, unless you put it on the agenda.
Sure. And I'll just answer those on the record. The city manager is, is completely correct that the council does not have the authority to rescind a permit approved by the CEO. So an appeal to the Board of Appeals is the, is the proper route, if somebody thinks that there's an error with a, a permit. So that's simply not before you. Similarly, with the remand, the, what the Board of Appeals called a remand to the city council, I think that was actually outside of the, the limited options that the Board of Appeals actually has when somebody makes an appeal. So I don't think that Ms. Blood's appeal is actually properly before the council, and I think it actually needs to go back to the Board of Appeals for that board to take action, to either, to hear the appeal, first consider whether it has jurisdiction, and if so, to either grant or deny the appeal. That's really, those are the only options that any Board of Appeals has when someone appeals to them. They can't just give out their authority to, to somebody else. And then, I think the city manager is correct with respect to policy, and even then, I'm not sure what the council would have the authority to do other than just sort of express a sentiment that the negotiation in terms of acquiring the property or doing something really would have to be with, with the property owner at this point.
Counselor Moore.
If I understand this correctly, the only way to save that building is to move it? Does that, is that basically what it boils down to? Because it's on a very small piece of land that's owned by Weber Oil. Is that correct?
Unless Weber desires, they want to give up the land. That's not the, that's not the sense I'm getting from Weber.
No.
They're happy to give up the buildings, the barn and the...
Yeah.
Counselor Fordy.
Couple of points. I'm not sure whether everybody has seen this, but we have in our email string, a letter from Weber to Ellsworth Historical Society, March 23, 2018, where they have offered to give a group the building for free and donate $7,500 to help with moving it. The building's been moved once before. It went from a little bit further to the road, onto a foundation that Weber donated the land for. So, the land isn't the historic thing. The location in Ellsworth Falls, I believe, is very important. But there's an option right there to at least get it off the property and salvage it for the future, and then you have time. I just can't see, I, I can't put my hand up and spend taxpayer dollars. That's why we got rid of it in 2005, was we couldn't afford or was not priority for us at the time. So, I, I'd love to see the building saved and taken off the site, and then the planning can start to do the end, end result.
And you're talking via a private group?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Terry, would you mind coming up, please?
Hi, I'm Terry Weed Cormier, and the president of the Ellsworth Historical Society. I hate doing this. Yes, Gary, we were asked about that, and I did talk with Rick Harnum at the Weber Corporation. We discussed it at Historical about taking the building on with the money, and our group knew we had enough on our plate right now with our building across the street, as well as our Chamberlain House. We did get quotes for moving the building from Jordan Mopers. He guessed $20,000 to $30,000 to move that building. They did not move it originally, so he didn't know the specifics, whether it even could be moved, because he didn't do it. I thought they probably did, but it was some other company. We requested, I asked Rick Harnum at Weber if they would possibly gift us land, because they own, it's quite a big chunk there. They've bought quite a bit, pieces up even in behind. And we thought, would you give us a piece of land up in behind to move the building, thinking we wouldn't have to deal with power lines and permitting and all that expense, to, just to find out possibly that would be less expensive. They were not interested in that whatsoever. So, sadly, we voted that we wouldn't be able to do that. But, that's kind of where that was with Historical. Any other questions?
Thank you. Yes, Judy?
May I?
Oh, please.
Curiously, when that happened, when the donation was offered and the, the, the building for free with the donation, the donation that was offered is about what it would cost to tear the building down. So, I think we need to keep in, in mind that that's a generous offer of a two-and-a-half-story building, if you can find a way to move it someplace, and you have a piece of land to put, put it onto, and you have the money to, to, to deal with all of that. I think that, a couple of points that I would like to make. First of all, since the last meeting, since our last gathering here, there's a lot that's happened as far as the save the Taconic Firehouse building is concerned, and I really wanted to talk with you a little bit about that. The National Historic Registry piece is one piece, and it seems to me it would be foolhardy to allow someone to tear down a building when it, the, the status is pending on that. Because should the building get torn down tomorrow, and should the status get approved, it would be embarrassing, I think, for the city of Ellsworth, and perhaps even for Weber, to have an approved building that is gone. Also, the situation is a little bit complicated as far as the fundraiser is, fundraising is concerned, but we have a commitment in just basically 10 days of $30,000. So, I have, I have faith that, that the city taxpayers would not need to take care of restoring this building, nor would I expect them to. As a taxpayer, I would not want to. And lastly, I think that, just days before the council meeting last month, the property went from for lease, will build to suit, to for sale. Weber is offering the property for $275,000. And looking into several possibilities, we, because that changes, that changes a lot as far as the, the saving of this building. Before, it was not available for purchase. Now, it's available for purchase. And so, we're looking into possibilities with developers who might be interested in developing that three-acre lot, in keeping with the history of Ellsworth Falls, and at the same time, preserving the building whose roots deserve to remain in Ellsworth Falls. So, there's a lot of possibilities that have come upon, that have come up since the last meeting, and that's why it felt awkward to just say, what do I want? I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that the, that the organization wants, but lastly, just out of curiosity, it was uncovered that at the December 19, 1988 meeting of the City Council, that it was resolved to refer the Ellsworth Falls Community Building to the Historic, Ellsworth Historic Preservation for consideration. And I have not yet uncovered the minutes from their meeting to see exactly what has happened or had happened with that. So, it feels, it feels against better judgment to, to tear this building down. I know that the, that the, the hearing, the, was, it was an awkward hearing, for sure. If you don't believe it, watch it. It was a little bit awkward. But I think that, that there was mention in there that they, that we wait six months before moving on this, and perhaps that's a wise thing. I'd also like to make one or two comments in regards to...
Judy?
Yes?
Your three minutes are up.
Okay, may I get back up after? Because these are different and new.
We've, we've heard this, Judy.
No, you have not heard this.
Well, I'm sorry, your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Rebecca Maddox Wilber. All the talk has been about the appeal, none about the agreement, because the opinion is that there's no precedent, and I would just like to remind people that precedents are set by trying them. A judge did advise that suit should be filed. It seemed, and we were advised, to wait and see what happens with the appeal first, because the agreement is legal. It was an agreement between the company, Weber Company, and the city of Ellsworth. The fact that it was left out of the deed is a little odd, I think. And I think proper digging could probably find, there could potentially be some improprieties there. So, we've been focusing on the appeal, the appeal, the appeal, but there's still that legal agreement. And for some reason, that doesn't seem terribly compelling, because there is no precedent. Well, all things are set by trying them. So, I, I would just like to toss out there that that agreement does still remain, and in that Weber said, if for any reason, because we are a very financially viable company, we should need to do something different. We have all kinds of land, et cetera, et cetera. All kinds of things are said in there that are not being mentioned. The only thing is, we're sticking to the appeal. But in the agreement, of course, I will say again, because it seems to keep getting forgotten, that if there was any change in use, it would be up to the counsel. That was a legal agreement between the city of Ellsworth and Weber. I'm sorry that Ed Behr did not see fit to include that in the deed. And we have established that the attorneys both work for the same firm, so there is a question of impropriety, and we're not going down the road of the agreement.
Rebecca, we, sorry, you, now, now you're getting into the conjecture arena, and I'm not going to allow that.
It's not conjecture.
I'm sticking with facts. Thank you very much.
The fact is, it has not been tried, has it?
Thank you. Moving on. Counselor? So, you know, one of the comments that I do hear is sometimes the public doesn't feel like they're getting, hearing what we're thinking. So, I certainly, on this issue, want to be very clear in terms of what I'm thinking and why I'm asking questions that I'm asking. And I would like to say that last meeting, we did have considerable discussion that went on. It was a back and forth. There was a lot of information shared. And I think that, that we have tried to get a lot of information about this, to understand it. I, the, I can't go back in time. As, as a member of this council, I'm charged with making decisions in the here and now, based on information that's presented to us. And as I sit here and listen to information, need to make sure also that decisions that I make as an individual member of this council is consistent with what we are able to do as a council. We have limits, and so, we have to fall within the limits that this body has. And no, no citizen would want this body to go beyond the scope of what we're here to do. And, and part of that falls into the realm of the legal aspects of it. And so, understanding legally what we can do as a council is also important and imperative. And so, having legal representation, I think that, that we heard the concern that was expressed about a potential conflict about the attorneys. And I think the council, we acted appropriately by saying, let's, let's honor that. Let's recognize that there could be a conflict of interest here. Let's bring in an attorney that doesn't have the conflict, ask those questions, and get a legal opinion that's not clouded in a potential conflict. And, and we've done that. And that's what I'm interested in hearing tonight, and heard some of it, about what legally do we have at our disposal tonight to, to move this forward. And that's notwithstanding what you would like to see, and it's not disregarding what you presented, but I think there are some limitations that we have to pay attention to. So, that's what I'm thinking, and that's what I'm considering as this goes forward this evening. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, counselors? Yes, Judy?
In looking at case law, a party seeking to reform a written deed must prove mutual mistake of fact by clear and convincing evidence. I would submit to the council that selling a building on Route 1A, a two-and-a-half-story building, for $5,000, with the agreement that the building was going to be maintained, would be clear and convincing evidence, regardless of whether there's a covenant attached to that deed. I would assume that Weber understood their responsibility in purchasing a building for $5,000 on Route 1A, regardless of whether there was a covenant attached to the deed. So, in looking at case law, I cite Leeds, and that is, a party seeking to reform a written deed must prove mutual mistake of fact by clear and convincing evidence. There is no more clear and convincing evidence that I need than that. I would also like to address the appeal, if I may. When I, when I first filed the appeal, I contacted Dwight Tilton. I queried him that the administrative appeal just didn't feel like it fit, as I was basing my argument on the RFP. He told me not to worry about it. I was just appealing his decision. So, I submitted my appeal under that guidance. I do not believe that that guidance was, was given to me in error.
Judy, you have told us this before. This is an exact repeat of what you've already told us. I'm sorry, it's...
I, I, I would like to just say that, that by the time the appeal was heard, my 30-day window of, of, of actually filing appeal correctly was gone.
Gordon? Gordon Workman, Assistant of Ellsworth. At that time, when Weber came to the council to, to give the proposal, did the City Council at that time accept the proposal as stated? That's a question.
An RFP is just a request for a proposal. An RFP, and, and what you get at the end of the day can be very close, can be the same, can be miles apart. From what I, from, from everything I've read on this, they weren't, they weren't close. The reason I'm asking is, if, if Weber came to you and gave you that proposal, and you accept a proposal as given at the podium, and then was written wrong, there should be a recourse for that, I would think.
Any other comments? Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. Is that something that you could speak to?
Sure. I think the answer to that question is the, in the minutes to the council meeting back when the, the motion was made to, to sell the, the building to Weber. So, I'm looking for those minutes right now.
Should be in June of '05.
But there, there, while I'm looking for that, there's two separate questions. There's what did the council authorize the city manager to do with that motion, and then separate question of whether there were commitments in the first place in that proposal by Weber. I think those are, those are separate questions. And then, the, the third issue of, once there's a deed and it's signed, does that overtake the document, the, the offer and acceptance documents in the way of a purchase and sale? And I think that the, the law is clear that it does. So, even if there was an intention, then there's the question, you know, was there a mistake of fact? And nobody on either side of the transaction has suggested that they made a mistake in that deed.
Would that preclude the opportunity to take this to, put it in Superior Court?
And, and appellant to the Board of Appeals, if they want, they can appeal the decision of a Board of Appeals to the Superior Court.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes, that, that option is, is still available.
Did you have any questions, Ma?
No.
Counselor Hudson?
I'm still, I, I, I don't, I can't wrap my mind around what our end goal in that would be. So, if we went to Weber, or we went, you know, if we filed a case saying that this was, the deed was, was done incorrectly, or there was a misrepresentation of what was to happen, and, and Weber said, you know what? Okay, fine. It's yours. We don't want it. The city doesn't want it back.
That would be the remedy.
That, that's right. So, a couple of things. One, I'm sorry for, for Counselor Moore. I, the question I was answering with respect to Superior Court was for the appellant. The appellant can still go to Superior Court, but, yes, the city could also go to Superior Court to, to address the issue, if there were the idea of a breach of contract. And that, that's exactly right. The remedy would be probably that if there, if there really were a contract that were, were breached, the remedy would be that the property would revert to the city, and then the city would be in exactly the situation it found itself back when it was trying to convey the property to someone else.
Would it be the entire property, or would they, would it be just this building?
No, it would be whatever is in the deed. The, a court wouldn't try to slice and dice the property that's conveyed in the deed. It would just be, the property would revert back.
Thank you. Mr. Workman?
Again, Gordon Workman. Now, just asking, one... Now, just asking, once the council approves the decision, that's the way it should be written, I would assume. If you accept it and says, so accept it, I would think that would be, if the minutes are state that way. Now, was it bad judgment how it was written or how it was done? Could be. I don't know. I'm not, I just overhearing what's going on and I'm just throwing my two cents worth there.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, Nicholas Navarre, Ellsworth resident. So I have a question relating to Counselor Hudson's comment. You kind of inferred that if Weber were to present the building to the city, the city does not want it. Is that the official status of the council?
I wasn't making an official status.
Okay, is that your word?
I was saying originally we got, we, we took $5,000 for the building because we were not interested in maintaining the building.
Okay.
That was, and we couldn't get anybody to take the building.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why it went for so low.
Okay, but what I'm referring to is if we went back through the deed and there was an agreement, you said, you said the city would not want the building if they were to offer the building back to the city.
I'm saying ultimately that's not where the city wants to be, is back in possession of that building. We wouldn't have sold it to begin with.
So the city does not want to be in possession of a building which is pending National Register of Historic status and currently is a group of citizens with $30,000 to restore that building?
I am not saying the city does not want that group of residents to have the building and do with it what they want.
Well, couldn't the city...
The city is not interested in, in...
Couldn't the city give that building to them if they became in possession of it?
I don't think anything I said, Nick said that I didn't, I wasn't in favor of that. I said that we do not want the responsibility for maintaining that building. That was all my comment meant. Don't read any more into it. And there's nothing more implied in what I said.
Okay. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I need to interject. This council has not set precedent on whether we want this building back or not. We've had conversations that has not come to a vote by the seven members sitting here. We all have our personal ideas on it, but it's, it's important to understand that we as a council have not declared that.
And to clarify, what I intended to say or what my point was, was if we had back at the time intended to, to do this with the property, we wouldn't have released it to begin with.
Yeah, I understand. Counselor Hamilton.
And I would just further add that I'm not sure based on what I'm hearing whether we have the option as a council to make that as a decision outside the fact of purchasing it for the sale price and an outright purchase of the property. So the, the other avenue in terms of is there a legal issue here where the city could force Weber to give the building back to the city? That's what I'm listening for, for factual information, legal information about whether we have that. And short of that, those facts emerging, the only other option would be for the city council to say, let's, let's buy the property outright. So they're two very separate issues in terms of this idea of possession of the building really is several steps down the road that I don't think we're even at the point of discussing that far.
Rebecca Maddox, while we're in keeping with that thought and speaking back to Counselor Hudson, the advisory was that to go through the Board of Appeals and then try to encourage you as a council to file suit in Superior Court, and if not you, ourselves, with the ultimate goal of Weber relinquishing the building because they didn't do what they said they would in the agreement. So relinquish it is the goal to bring it back into the control of a group that cares about it. So our comment, I think, can speak for us as a group, is that if that occurred and it did go to court and it was given back to the city, then our group would like to take the building over. We know the city of Ellsworth doesn't want to do that. That came up in the late eighties and 2005, 2004, 2005. We know that. We're prepared to do that. But Weber would need to relinquish the building through court or otherwise.
I, I think if it was a matter of just relinquishing the building, it puts us in a, in an odd situation in the sense that if, whether it was given to the city or given to the group, only the building, it still has to be moved because Weber evidently has some plans.
I should have said property. I meant property, not just the building.
Um, I, I think maybe one of the possible recourses is to, for, for the group that you're referencing, to meet with Weber and ask them if they could possibly hold off on the destruction of the building pending the sale and maybe have the opportunity of dealing with a new owner to do something like that. I, I, that may be the best possible solution.
Unfortunately, they have been contacted on numerous occasions and will not return calls or have conversation.
Counselor Fordy.
Mr. Chairman, I think for tonight with everything in front of us is, we've been told by our attorney that we have no standing to make a decision on this demolition permit.
That the Board of Appeals did not have the standing to send it.
No, that we don't.
Right, but they didn't have the standing to send it to us.
Right.
So therefore, we have no standing on it.
Right. So the best thing that I can see that comes out of tonight is that on advice of our attorney in this matter, is that we ask the appeals board to take it up again and go through the full hearing with facts and, and do their job so that either something happens or they have a process to appeal to Superior Court.
Is that a motion?
If you would like that as a motion, yes, sir, I would.
I would take that as a motion. Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
A point of question, are we as a city going to have our attorney representing us at that appeals board in this matter so there's no question of a conflict?
I would defer to Code Enforcement Officer Dwight Tilton, but I believe, I believe we are, correct? Or...
I think...
Yes.
I'm, I'm happy to.
Yeah. That's not my chain of command here. It's Dwight's, but, but...
Behind the other side. Okay, I just, we, we've started down this road, Mr. Chairman. Let's make sure the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted so that they have a legitimate pathway to Superior Court.
Counselor.
So the, the other, a comment that attorney made is that besides the action we just took in terms of what, what was in our control was that we, the best we could do maybe is to express a sentiment. So I want to do this and I want, and I'm going to repeat what other councilors have said. I think that there is certainly a willingness to help participate in terms of talking with Weber, encouraging Weber to donate the building. I think they've acknowledged that they would be willing to do that in that March letter. I would assume that they would be willing to do that. And I think it probably would mean relocating the building. But in terms of if the goal of this process, your advocacy, and this is why I asked the question, is to save the building and to restore the building, then the best option would be to find the, the resources and the ability to turn that building over to a private entity and to work with resources available to make that happen. And there's, I don't see any reason why there can't be a process by which that is pursued in good faith and, and work together to see if that can, can be possible because that accomplishes exactly what you're talking about. May, may it jeopardize the historical status? Maybe, maybe not. That, hearing Counselor Fordy talk about the, the property and where it sat before, it may not, it may. But if the end goal is about preservation of that building, I think we should continue to try to find a, a way to turn that over to this group that is very interested, strong advocacy, has already raised some money and pursue that opportunity.
Thank you.
May I make a comment earlier?
We're moving on. The consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Two items tonight. Item 10, Council Order Number 121800, appointment of the city clerk as the registrar of voters with a term to expire on January 1st, 2021. And item 11, Council Order Number 121801, request of the city assessor for abatement of FY 2018 taxes, Assessor Richard Soraco, Muni ID number 190360, in the amount of $91.65 plus interest and fees.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Under new business, item 12, public hearing in action on the following applications for new and/or renewal of the following licenses. First one, Finelli's of Maine Incorporated, 12 Down East Highway, for renewal of a city Class B license, Victrula Liquor Arcade, and renewal of a state restaurant liquor license, malt and vinus.
Move approval. Oh, you have it open, it's a public hearing, sorry.
No, it's not a new one. Public hearings only, public hearings only on the new ones.
No. Presence, presence is...
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah. This opens a public hearing on Finelli's of Maine application. Does anyone make a comment on it? Now's your time. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilors.
Move approval.
Second. I'll take it now. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous? And the second one, Ellsworth CI LLC, DB, Doing Business, has Ellsworth Comfort Inn, 130 High Street, for renewal of a city lodging license. Public hearing is open on this application. Seeing no takers, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval. Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Item 13, Council Order Number 121802, request of the city manager to renew the Franklin Street parking, parking lot lease agreement.
Counselors, as you recall, a year ago, the city, historically it had a 25-year lease with the United Methodist Church. Back in the early nineties, I believe it was 1992, the city was successful in getting a grant. And in order to get that state grant, it had to have a long-term lease to justify public right to the property. That 25-year lease ran out last year. We had discussions with the United Methodist Church. In the end, everyone agreed it was a good partnership. The church was able to use the, the parking lot, which is up on Franklin Street, near the Pocket Park, so to speak, and the new electric car charging station. And the church was able to use that for special events on Sunday and other special events. And the city had it for parking, particularly overflow parking in the summertime. So the city authorized the manager a year ago to enter into a one-year lease. The reason for the one-year lease, where we were in discussions at the time about potential capital improvements to the property and if the city is to make improvements, certainly we'd want more than a one-year lease commitment. We are still discussing with the United Methodist Church some improvements. None are, are overly significant in the big picture. Paving that lot when and if that needs to happen would probably be in the $30,000 or $40,000 range, but our public works director believes there are other things we can do. And anyways, what we're proposing is to renew last year's lease for $1 and continue the existing relationship. So it's only a renewal of the existing lease to exercise that option. And I would also point out that this one-year lease that we entered in last year was, was done with review of our legal counsel. And so I believe this is fairly straightforward and I would ask you to authorize the manager to execute this lease renewal for, for another year.
Discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to authorize the city manager to execute a lease agreement for the Franklin Street parking lot for the United Methodist Church of Ellsworth for a period of approximately one year, consistent with existing terms and conditions under the current lease agreement dated December 23rd, 1992.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further comments? All those in favor? Unanimous? Item 14, Council Order Number 121803, discussion in action on appointing a city councilor to the Frenchman Bay Regional Shelffish Municipal Joint Board. This is the one I didn't want to see coming up.
Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion or would you like to...
Let's get it over with. I'll, I'll take, you know...
Before you add dates, can we have a little conversation first?
That's what I was asking. This, this is just to appoint a city councilor to the municipal joint board. It's nothing more than that.
The motion is a lot more than that.
Yes, it is. Hang on.
My, my concern, Mr. Chairman, is in the proposed motion, we're also notifying them that we're withdrawing as the administrative municipality and giving them a deadline of March 31st. In reviewing the documents the last couple of days, the membership chooses the administrative municipality from its members and their year runs with the municipality. So in other words, if Lemoine is on town meeting and they're the next one, we need to time that so at town meeting, they can do it. And then we can continue the financial part of it until the end of June, which is our financial year. Those books get audited with our audit and are filed. And then the next, it's just a smoother transition to the next municipality. So I just, when, when I read this and said that, that we were going to be gone by March 31st, I have an issue with that. I, I think we need to negotiate with them and find out who's going to take the administrative municipality and what is in best for both parties to get it done. I think putting the line in the sand hasn't worked very well for other politicians and I don't think I want to put a line in the sand. Given, our intent is to, is to stop doing this. Let's figure out a Brexit move.
I have a question from Madam Clark. There are licenses that, that you begin to sell early May?
The licenses in the lottery are on like June 15th and the licenses become effective July 1st. We can't sell the new ones until June 15th, but it's advertised in April and that they will go on sale.
The way that Counselor Fordy just explained it, is there, do you see a downside to that?
Except for she's stuck with the lottery for another year.
Well, the March, I think the March date comes from the 60-day window that were required under that ordinance to, if we're going to withdraw in any capacity, you need to give them 60 days.
Minimum.
Notice. I mean, we could definitely work with them to transition if there's a new. My fear is if we don't have a date, associate somewhere with the 60 days, there is no clear definition of when and who's going to advertise. Is it this existing body or is it the one stepping up? So I mean, giving, I don't have an issue with that, working with the next municipality. There's a 60-day notice we have to give.
But if we were to, if it's done March 31st, then we would not deal with the lottery. Is that correct?
Correct. And the new municipality would need to advertise and then hold the lottery in June, June 15th.
Mr. Chairman, again, my concern is all the other municipalities, I believe.
And that means?
Our town meeting and some of them don't get over until June to vote to take over the administrative municipality. I just think it's so much smoother to negotiate with them and get it done smoothly. I'll shut up.
Counselor Hudson.
If we gave them a deadline based on the 60 days, would they not be able to hold a special meeting of some sort to organize and figure out who's to take it over?
Not town meeting. Those are once a year. That's where towns.
This organization itself would.
You can do a special town meeting, I believe. But yeah, it's expensive outside of the regular town meeting. I think what Gary says has some merit, certainly. I'm wondering, but the converse of that is, you know, if you're saying to the end of June, you know, that gives quite a bit of leeway that way, too. Is there a middle ground here where we can express our intent to leave, exercise the 60 days, but perhaps even come back to the council if, to extend this March 31st if it turns out that, if we need to?
I'm not sure that I read the same thing you do. I think the 60 days is if we're leaving the organization, not stepping down as the administrative municipality. I think if we are backing out of the entire agreement.
I think there, Heidi, you did, excuse me.
They do not specifically state a time. I just assume if you're going to have to give 60 days, you're going to get out of the program, you'd also need to give them some type of.
Yeah. I think, I think deputy city manager's looking it up right now. Heidi had pulled, excuse me, Clerk Grindel had pulled some, the information from the agreement, but I do think it laid out the procedures for the administrative municipality withdrawing, but I defer to.
The other thing, if I could just say, that notice that goes in has to say what town they're going to purchase them from. So there would have to be an agreement at some point of who's going to pick it up at what time, because once you advertise it, they need to know where to go to purchase them on June 15th.
That may be ours.
Please.
So the withdrawal section states, in the event the administrative municipality withdraws, one of the remaining members shall assume those duties. The process of electing administrative municipality is outlined in the agreement shall be followed. All records entitled held by the withdrawing administrative municipality shall be turned over to the new administrative municipality.
But we're not withdrawing, we're just stepping back from being the municipality.
Right.
The administrative municipality.
I think that's what it said.
Right, that's what I was saying.
As the administrative municipality.
I think it's withdrawn from the agreement.
Counselor.
I wonder if we can maybe put forward a motion that would allow the city manager to provide notice that we want to withdraw as the administrator and to then ask that the negotiation, the terms of the negotiation, come back to the next meeting for further discussion and review where we might take some more definitive action in terms of timeframe and do that within the context, as you're saying, Counselor Fordia, of the, what the requirement has in place and negotiate that through to at least get the process.
Counselor.
Or complete the withdrawal process as administrative municipality as quickly as possible with a date no later than June 30, 2019?
We have a minimum of 60 days under the agreement.
60 days after notification, correct?
Part seven of the agreement, under remedies 7.3, any party may withdraw from this agreement subject to the following, notice of intent to withdraw at least 60 days prior. That's not withdrawing as the municipal controlling agency, whatever it's called. All we're doing is stepping aside. We want to stay a member of this organization, I believe. So we're just giving up our status as the administrative municipality. I don't believe there's any timeframe in any of this that I've read that says you have to give them so many days. It's withdrawal from the entire agreement. Mr. Chairman, you accept a motion to appoint you as the joint municipal board and then let you talk to them about the best way to do it?
There was a meeting in Lemoine on Thursday night.
Yep.
And that's, I'll be there.
I move to appoint Mark Blanchett to the Frenchman Bay Regional Shelffish Municipal Joint Board. Period.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counselor.
So do we need to do anything with the motion around, can Chair Blanchett go with the intent and give the official word without a motion?
Yeah, go and ask what's going to happen if.
He's not, he's not giving a final answer. He's saying how do we, this is what we're talking about.
Our intent is.
Yeah.
Our intent is.
Okay.
How it will work best for everybody.
Thank you.
Like you're not making, you're not making a commitment or giving them a fine deadline about what.
I wouldn't have the authority to.
Right. Yeah, that's what he was asking.
But you're giving them valid notification that we are going to.
Yes.
That is our intent.
That's our intent.
Okay.
And I would add, if you do this at the January meeting, even if the 60 days did apply, March 31st would still be, would still work.
And I will leave a recap of what went on at that meeting. I will not be here at the January meeting, but I'll leave a recap with the city manager and you'll all have a copy of what went on at the meeting in Lemoine.
We'll squeeze that out of your Friday morning finance.
You could do that, too. Got a motion and a second?
Oh, you already voted.
Oh, we did vote on it?
No. It's not nice to miss them. I've done, I've been there.
All those in favor?
Congratulations, you need promotion.
Unanimous. Now the claim warden.
In January, you'll be appointed.
Oh, geez, you got me all shook up here.
Mr. Chairman, move to executive session. This costs personnel matters in accordance with MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A. There'll be no action on that item once we come out.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you.